Hi, welcome everybody here. We're gonna, I think, get this through fairly quickly today. So let us just start so that we can. Mr. Kirby, you've been gone with things, but you have a report for us to...
I do. Cheer up these hands. Yes, I was gone. And we're in the Weezer School District levy pass. That's pretty exciting news. Appreciate Alex putting that out on Living in the News and thank you to the community. It's nice to have a supportive community that wants to favor the schools. So we certainly appreciate it. All and everybody's efforts are not question. We've had, let's see, we've got Veterans Assemblies coming up tomorrow. So I think I share that at some point. I encourage you to go to one if you can. So Weezer Middle School 8:15 tomorrow, High School 11 o'clock, Park School is at 1:20, and Pioneer at 2:15. Those are the times. So you get a chance to go there. We had, I've shared with you some issues we've had at the high school. Seems to be due to some humidity for some various reasons. We've got a few experts kind of trying to figure it out. But there's been some swelling, especially on some of the floor joists, some of the floors if you walk down and notice. The main one I was able to notice was back by the boys' bathroom, kind of the opposite side of the main doors. Go back to the northwest side, boys' bathroom. You can see that seam that's just separated a little bit and it's just very strange. And so we brought in, the folks to take a look at it. Of course Drew and his crew are on it looking at it, and Eric Pfeiffer. And anyway, so we have, we brought in RestoClean and they, and there are a couple that came down to play their force, check on things. And they've been underneath and put a new vapor barrier in the entire building. They brought in some dehumidifiers, the humidity was pretty high. And so we're trying to just get that under control. We also sprayed for the potential mold to make sure that wasn't, that would be a factor. Also looking at now, we had EB Studios come over and walked around the perimeter. There are areas where the downspouts aren't very far from the foundation. We've got to go around and go back down underneath the foundation. So this has to get fixed. We need to get the humidity stabilized and figured out. And we're hoping that that will bring some of that back down. There's a couple of doors that are tighter than they would be. And there's, of course, seasonal change in most city buildings. You get some of that fluctuation, but this is clearly more than that. So we're getting on it. Appreciate Drew and his crew reported it and what they're looking at and see what we can get done. So that's in works. I mentioned to you that we have the Raptor system we put in place. It's a safety check. And they have it in high school. Kevin Hennessy, our tech director, and me and Davies, we'll get that in place. And I know they, they wanted to get it working well in one building and then they're gonna take it out to the other building. So they had a few glitches, so they're still kind of looking. So they'll go to Pioneer, it'll be next in line, then Park, then the middle school got ordered to put them in place. And we have all the hardware and that was a ROR Foundation grant. We really appreciate them for what they have done for that. So it checks all 50 states, sex registry, you know, that kind of a background check. And so we use it for our visitors, volunteers that are gonna be with, close with kids. If they just come to the office or they just come to the Christmas program, we're not checking everybody, but clearly if they're gonna have access and go back and work with kids in classrooms, they just go through that check. We've been talking a lot in our admin council about the Danielson Framework. And this Friday, the principal's gonna lead a discussion in their buildings on the workday about the Danielson Framework, which is our evaluation process. And it's a bigger deal maybe this year because we've gone to the crew ladder. The crew ladder states that, you know, kind of gives you some criteria and it's based on the Danielson Framework. So our principals have all had training in the Danielson Framework, but we're kind of refreshing that and so that they can get out to their teachers and give them a pretty clear what the criteria is for the different categories that they could be evaluated on. So looking forward to that this Friday. You guys probably saw along with the levy that Barb and I did a little three-minute talk on Living in the News. Alex came down and appreciated that. You know, we did those couple of community meetings and we've got five, six people total. I noticed on that, they had, you know, I don't know, 3,000 some views, which was pretty good. So that's a good way to get some word out. So that ended up being a really good tool in that way. And then I know Nancy covered it real well too for us. So appreciate, appreciate our news folks getting the information out of that. Let's see. I wrote to you about our track. It was looking really good there for a couple hours. And the track doctor, he was a subcontractor to Triple G, came out and they were gonna fix that bump over on the west curb. And they got out there and looked at it and it appeared to them that it has grown a little bit. And so we didn't want to just fill it in and fix it if it's still moving. And so at this point, we'll put it off until next spring at some point. So it's gonna be a warranty item and it's gonna be interesting to get done with Triple G. But it is a warranty, so it should get fixed. But if it's still moving, we gotta figure out what is the problem and hopefully stabilize it before we fix it. Otherwise, it's gonna be a pretty big fix. And so, you know, it's not, the track doctor is clearly, he's a track guy. And we're looking at that. I know they can get through the season. It's not gonna be a total disaster. It'd be rough if you're gonna figure out hurdles probably on that corner. Or not, something there on the other corner. But as soon as possible, but maybe, maybe just after track season. We'll see how that plays out. John Ruins here, in case you missed one. He's arrived. So EB Studios, we worked with them on a couple of things. Their estimates came in higher than we had anticipated on this building project. The field house, we plan to bid as soon as we can and the papers are all ready to go as I understand it, except for we don't have the final plans for RM steel. And so once we have those from them, we can go out and, they've given that to you, the district, for low cost. So it's hard to put too much pressure because we appreciate what they're doing. So when they're able to get that together, then we will take that bid unredone. So that's what we're back to. This Friday, we're gonna, in addition to Danielson training, we have a safety committee meeting. And Trey, Trey is helping with that. Appreciate you guys helping with Trey Walker in the USRO.
I think I taught him in the interim.
Yeah. And we'll be doing a safety committee meeting. We had one committee meeting a month ago and we're gonna do one this month and probably another in December. Just trying to get everybody on the same page with all our safety code balls is to review what they are currently and make any adjustments. Something needs to be done a couple of years after you leave the state. Appreciate his efforts in that. We're working on a little flip book. It's a real quick reference book that we wanna have in these classrooms. And he's helping us with that as well. So appreciate that. So that's probably enough. Any questions?
Appreciate it. Appreciate the work that you and all your staff have put in. We have the written administrative reports in front of us. Is there anything, let's just do a quick, let's do as quick an rundown as we can if you don't mind.
Yes, you know, I'm sorry. Kerry is out tonight and Steve as well, so they're not here today, but I think you have the report. So yeah, if we can go down the line and just...
I'll just start. You saw my report there. The enrollment is scaring me just, you know, that's kind of where we're at. We've sure lost a few kids there to get to that number. And I don't know when the last time we've had that number as far as student enrollment. It's been a while since we've been down that far. But just kind of going along with some of my notes, just some quick things I wanna hit on. Not gonna read my report I already sent to you, but just wanna say kudos to our counseling team, Amy Clark, Katie Maloney, Nikki Erickson, Stacey Giroff. All the work that those guys do to help our kids get ready for school, for college and things beyond high school has just, they've just done a tremendous job with FAFSA nights, filling out scholarships, making sure kids are all accomplishing all of the classes that they need to and passing those. I mean, they've done a great job. So just wanna give them a pat on the back. And then Casey Clark, Amy Clark have done a really good job for us with our interim ISATs. They got that off and running. That's Mr. Clark's thing is he likes the data and stuff like that, so I let him run with it. He's done a great job for us, he and Amy. And then of course, our teachers in those classrooms that have put those interim ISATs out. We've got our data in. We're gonna analyze that and then figure out, identify where we need to work and get that going. So that should be coming. Sports teams, we are closing up our seasons here. We had a nice job from our cross-country team. Claire Matthews, Corianna Parsons, and Blake Quentin did a really good job along with the other, the rest of the team, but those were our placers. Football lost a close one. Tom Harrison and staff did a tremendous job this season and had our boys in a position to get home bail finally. And so it was a pretty fun season for them. Volleyball did a fantastic job. They had a really tough league this year and just did an outstanding job in their season as well. And we ended up fourth in league, but in that league was state champions and the third-place team. And so that's, that's good competition for us. So we were right there with them. Our band has always been successful and continues that. You can see on that report some of the things that they've done. Tonight, we are hosting the, let me get this straight, the girls 3A and 4A All-Star volleyball game in just a few minutes up at the high school. The one thing, we're volunteering a few of those to host some of those extra things this year. I haven't been here for a board meeting or two. And so again, thank you for our gym. That thing is beautiful. It gives our kids some pride, you know, when they're playing on that court and it looks really nice. And so some of these extra events, we're doing that to show our gym off and, you know, we're awfully proud of it. So appreciate the work with that as well. So are there any questions?
Is there a musical coming up?
There is.
What is that? Musical or choir concert?
It's a concert, right?
Choir concert.
Choir concert.
There's no musical?
It's a musical every year.
Every other, yeah.
I don't believe so. Has someone told him there was one? So I, but I haven't heard of that.
I don't believe so. I think we just have the musical coming up. Yep. I can find out for you though.
Okay.
I know that our sports teams that are coming up, wrestling will start next Monday. I believe boys' basketball starts this Friday. Girls' basketball's already started. The numbers are okay. We're in a good spot for who's came out. And so I'm pretty excited to see what those winter sports teams do as well, so. The floor scares me, you know. I immediately call anytime I start seeing something going on in the building and that shift in the building, just some of those things, the older building, made me panic a little bit. So I appreciate Mr. Kirby coming right up and starting to look at that because we have nice facilities in our school district and we wanna keep those nice. And so I appreciate the effort to come up right away. And it was important to me and I appreciate that it was important to him to get up there and take a look at that. So thanks.
Middle school? Yes, I know. I'm gonna be very brief in comparison. Well, our fall sports finished up. Seventh grade under Coach Dickerson's leadership, right, took first in their SRV. So, and then our eighth grade team was third overall for the SRV. And our volleyball girls finished their season very strongly. And so now we have girls' basketball underway and wrestling. This will be our year to host the SRV for the wrestling, wrestling SRV. So that'll be kind of an all-hands-on-deck and a big learning curve, I'm certain for that. So they're doing well. With our Wolverine Stronger, one of my goals for the year is to celebrate, so we're trying to recognize students. We had a pizza party for our students that were on the high honor roll and/or had perfect attendance. So we had a lot of students there and some students got two pieces of pizza, but it was interesting. It wasn't as many people with two pieces as I thought it would be. There were quite a few of perfect attendance and then honor roll. So, but they really enjoyed it. The feedback was they appreciated that and it was something different and a new way to recognize that. Our Wolverine Stronger, we're connecting it, we're gonna connect it with the Gear Up grant that we just received. So we're finishing up at the high school with that. And then it will be this year's seventh graders, next year's sixth graders that will follow through their career. So we're gonna connect a lot of that with goal setting and monthly have little challenges for them to meet and related to filling out an application, filling out your this. So just kind of focus on that Wolverine Stronger and the characteristics and relate those to those. We've completed our interim assessment blocks and our focus right now, if you look at the data, you can see that we're very much in align with what has been done by the state in those, in those areas that we've assessed. We started with the standards that we've selected as our essential standards and we said, what's the one big one? If you weren't gonna do anything else, what's the one big one? And our thinking is if the state is showing students are not all proficient at the state level, if we can let our students know, hey, you're proficient at this, then we can just build from there. So we'll start with that one standard, then go to the next standard and just align our interventions and stuff with each standard as we go. So right now, obviously, it was at the beginning of the year, so they haven't received all of that instruction at that grade level, but that's our focus on those different areas. And you'll see that with the data. We've got plans for semester celebrations for our accelerated readers. And students are really starting to pick up and engage in that. I've got a stack of book recommendations because I'm gonna try and, my goal is to read books along with them. So I've got a lot of book recommendations to go with that. So things are, things are moving along and everyone seems to be doing a great job. So we have a good team. Appreciate all of their work.
Jeff?
Briefly, one good and one bad thing. The bad thing first, we had internet outage for about two weeks there. Evidently, we had some technology avalanche that happened downstairs that took them a while to figure out step by step what was wrong and they kept finding other things. So the hero of the day, if you see her around town, Joya Hill, she saved our bacon. She let us use their Slocum Hall's Wi-Fi, kept us in business for the last two weeks. And we had our internet back up today, which that was, that was a big, big win for our tech guys. I know it was really frustrating for those guys and they've done a good job. So that is not criticizing them and what they're doing that it took so long, but they've found a lot of, a lot of problems along the way on this. So that was the bad, that was the bad. The good is that the 20th of November, next Thursday, is gonna be the end of our second session. We have a young lady, Leilani Chaney, who is going to be graduating that morning. So our graduation ceremony is gonna be at 10:30 in the morning on November 20th. So wanted to let you know that. So you're all welcome to come as always and see that.
Cool. Cool.
All right. Well, I sent you the board report, so I won't read everything, but on academic achievement over the past month, I've completed informal classroom observations across all of the special education staff. The visits allowed me to engage with teachers around instructional practices, student engagement, and strategies for supporting academic growth. And then following each observation, I held individual debriefing sessions with teachers to discuss areas of strength and opportunities for improvement related to those learning outcomes. And then on the Medicaid front, this Friday, our Work Friday, I will be providing a training for our special education teachers and paraprofessionals on the new Medicaid billing system using EdPlan. So that should be a really good plan to just streamline everything and help improve our billing. And then state and federal updates, on October 21st, I attended a virtual meeting for special education directors hosted by Parallel and presented by Dr. David Bateman. The session provided important updates regarding the recent reduction in force in the U.S. Department of Education, in which 466 employees were laid off, including nearly all staff from the Office of Special Education Programs. So I won't read through all of that, but Dr. Bateman emphasized that while IDA and Section 504 remain fully in law, the operational support and enforcement mechanisms at the federal level are now largely absent. So fortunately, we have proactive systems in place already within our district that align closely with best practices recommended during the session. As a result, we are well positioned to maintain compliance and continue providing high-quality support and documentation for our students with disabilities, even as the broader oversight structure undergoes significant change. And then below that is the numbers. We have seen an increase in our special education count. You can see our total through all the buildings is 100, we have 171 students now that are special education. We have five referrals, eight consents, and one eligibility. And then I have the percentages laid out. So specific learning disability accounts for 20% of that. Other health impairment is 25%. Language impairment 13%. And then autism is 14% of that. Any questions?
It doesn't look like we have any system come in at this time for the beginning of the meeting. There's another opportunity towards the end of the meeting that we will have some comments. So we will move to, is the W, is there a representative in the W A here?
Shalay.
Oh, Shalay. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so this will be a few little updates from us. Last Thursday, we had a W A vote because we had a lot of leadership changes that needed to happen in places and where there were no leadership. So we now have co-presidents, myself and Ariel. Then Brandy Milliron is the secretary and Courtney Thompson is the treasurer. And we'll be kind of moving those around, but those are the actual leadership. We also are moving around and making sure that we have building representatives at each building. Those aren't completely identified yet, so that's still in the works. One of the things that was kind of interesting as we're talking about some positives that teachers wanted to share with you. Pioneer is grateful to have some new subs trained in the district. So seeing them come in, and we saw them at the middle school as well, that was, that was nice. We've even had some of them already fulfill some of the spots that we've had this week and that's been, that's been useful. So that was something that was, was mentioned and we're thankful for. The district needs to, but, not but, but as we continue to look at some of those concerns, the district would love if the needs of ours sped, paras, and subs with that. When they're gone, they're often not replaced, but they're talking about, especially at some of Pioneer and Park, some of the functioning that's happening in the classroom is very hard to continue without a replacement. And so a lot of times they, they're just not refilled if we didn't have enough subs or, and I'm not sure exactly what that is. Sometimes, sometimes not, but it happens often. That's something that kind of makes the classroom organization with the teachers when they're A little bit more difficult when it happens often, which it has been happening more often. Other than that, at the high school, we've just been in, and at the middle school, again, with just kind of fulfilling those needs and roles, a lot of the new people have kind of been spread out throughout the district. And we're glad that our numbers are up a little bit as well. And so those are just some of the things we have. You have any questions for us? Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Moving into our consent agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at our past notes and how many questions or changes that we need to make? And I know, that I know there's no changes or anything on our current agenda that we We get to consider the retirement or resignation notices of staff?
Goes over that.
It's gonna go down. I'm not gonna read it. I'm gonna let Melanie do that. I don't know what I'm gonna do next year, Melanie.
I cannot accept that.
No, this is good.
We're the board of trustees, superintendent Kirby, and HR director, Kyla Dickerson. I have decided to retire from the Weezer School District effective November 30th. My first official retirement date with Percy will be December 1st. I appreciate the opportunity the Weezer School District has provided to me. Sincerely, Barbara Choak.
Well, thanks for the notification. I don't know what we're gonna do with it, but thanks for the notification. Any staff hiring that we need to go over, Mr. Kirby, this time? Well, with that, Barb, Ms. Choak, you can give us your financial report.
All right. Well, I really hope that my position can be looked at in a different light, so, and not a full retirement. So that's my hope. But anyway, on our numbers, incredibly boring this time, which I'd love to present to you guys. So I really have absolutely no line item to point out to you as you reviewed it. I don't know if you had any questions for me on anything that was on there?
Any questions?
Well, what I am very excited about is that our levy passed that makes budgeting for next year very easy to look forward to. We'll still have some challenges with state holdbacks, but knowing that our community supports us at that level is, is a really good feeling inside. And also it makes it much easier to budget those particular items for those specific items that the levy was passed for. And I can't let myself run out of opportunities to speak. So to the 46% that chose not to support the levy, I really want you to call me and tell me why. I want to know what we can do different. I would love to have seen 100% support for that levy. And I really enjoy going out and speaking to the public about the school finances. And I would love to continue that because you know me, I love to talk about our numbers and I love to talk about our kids. So I throw that out to Nancy and to Alex to please have people continue to call me. I did receive one phone call last week from a person who was somewhat upset that the levy did pass. We were able to have a nice conversation about everything. We were able to have a nice conversation about everything and they understood why we were asking for the money and how it was working. This individual actually thought that we had doubled up on the $750,000 and that we were doing both. So, I was able to explain that, you know, I felt like we had explained that throughout that whole levy process, but there were still a group of people that didn't understand that. So, anybody who still has questions, my number's still out there and I would really love to talk to people about that because the next time we have to run a levy, I would really like to see us in the 80 to 90, maybe 99% success ratio on that vote, so I just want to throw that offer out there, so.
Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thanks, Barb.
You know me, I love to talk.
If there wasn't a plan, I'd be a lot more disappointed, Barb, but thank you very much. So, with that, that's the end of our consent agenda and order for us to move on to...
Number F.
Oh, F, she's, see, I moved down and moved on with Dr. Kyla. Would you please?
Probably have bills.
Talk to us a little. We might have a bill or two.
A lot of bills.
There was a few pages.
There's 55 of them. That was a lot of them.
Any questions you have?
No, we're all pretty straight.
I didn't have any questions. No questions about bills? Okay, now can we move on from the consent agenda?
No, we need a motion.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I don't accept the resignation.
I know. Yeah, I can't call it a letter.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know what happens with that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as given.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. As we're moving to the action items, we have someone that wants to graduate early. Is that what we're seeing, Mr. Kirby?
Yeah, I'll give it to Drew.
Turn it over to Drew.
Yeah, so we have a student on there. Did you see this sheet?
I don't have nothing attached.
Okay. So, we have a student at the high school. She is going to graduate a semester early. She's completed all of her necessary requirements to graduate from Weezer High School, has done a nice job, and she's actually been accepted to a college to go early, and so this is something that we've done in the past and I think that her moving on to her next step would be best for her. Hopefully you would consider that.
Yeah, we, we discussed it a little while and clearly it's in our best interest, it seems based on what situation, so I would recommend that we allow that representation. I mean, speaks volumes to students that can get to that point and be ready and move on to another part of their lives. So, both, both the students and the teachers that have helped her get there, that's fantastic. Any questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
That we approve the early graduation request from Weezer High School. For the student, I don't know.
Okay, student made.
Yes, student made.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Okay.
Thank you.
Considering the adoption approval of the State Department of Education manual, it's something that we do yearly, correct? So, anybody have any questions about that manual? Was there any specific changes that we needed to be aware of?
It's a fluid, it's a fluid document. And if you, I attached the URL for it so you could go there, but they've got, got amendment says they're going down that, so, and that's why Nicole recommended if you would please approve it with the recommendations for the, otherwise we'll have to keep coming back to you for the amendments, but they should all be in there for this year, so.
No major changes, just some updates and some verbiage, yeah.
I would make that motion that we consider the adoption and approval of the State Department of Education's said manual with any amendments made by the State Department of Education in FY '26. I'll second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We need to get rid of a red and white van.
This red and white van was probably when you were in high school.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
It's named Wanda.
They call it wandering Wanda for a reason. You drive down the road and it goes to the left or the right and so, but Mr. Wenton, or Mr. Wenton, Wenton, we were gonna donate it to the Auto Mac for them to kind of go through and see if there's anything they could do, and he said, "Please get rid of this." So, I don't think it's even worth looking around at it, so that's what we need to do. Have you guys approved that? I think both just, and we're not gonna probably go out for a bit on this, we'll probably just scrap.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we dispose of the red and white wandering Wanda van. I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yes, as good as nothing. At this time, we will have a brief executive session, so we will invite everyone to...
Can I make a suggestion though? If, we're not gonna make any motions after that, although I know we've got a citizen comment, but if, if, do you need the others to stay? I mean, it's, they were...
We don't, those that don't have other things. The last thing, just so you know, some of you have the agenda, but we're gonna talk about future agendas coming out. We're gonna talk about the school levy and, and the results and what that means to us, just as a discussion, and then we will have the community comments after that. So, those of you that don't feel like you want to come back for that, thank you for being here in the first place, appreciate your time. Anything we want to put on the future agenda? Future agenda topics that are probably, let's put on there to report on our meetings that we're gonna have this week? Any other topics that anybody, oh, anybody have a topic they'd like us to talk about? Because I can't, I'm always here. Fieldhouse is gonna be on there one way or the other. Some action, some discussion. Okay, we'll wait for that time, but yeah, it'll be on there. All right, let's talk a little bit more about this supplemental levy. The results are positive, that's a wonderful thing. I wish Mr. Clary can be here so we could welcome him to our team starting in January. I'm just gonna try and make him, but he's got some business things to do, so. Barb, do you want to talk some more about the levy or you talked out?
I'm good, so as long as people know they can still holler at me, you have eight questions about anything.
Till November 30th, are you giving out your home number?
I shouldn't have done that, that wasn't right.
Like Barb, you know, you get the, so you're gonna do a budget in, in April, so if we waited until the May election, she wouldn't be able to budget that, so now it's, it gives her a lot of, a lot of relief just knowing what it's gonna be and she doesn't have to guess whether it's gonna pass or not, so that's huge, so nice to get it done.
It's nice to get the word out too, I, I didn't even think about the question of, of double dipping. It wasn't something that I even, until somebody asked me that as well.
Yep.
So, it's good to get that out there that this levy has passed, but it does not go into effect until after the old one expires.
December of '26.
And the conversation that I had with the individual, he was actually part of a group that was getting together and he was gonna go back and share that information, so, and he promised me that he would, anybody who still had questions about that, he promised me he would direct them back my way. He felt that I had explained it to him in a manner that he understood and supported, so he would get that message out for us as well, so.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a date that the state, like, could possibly tell us if they're helping us with that levy or they're paying the...
They won't know until August.
August.
Next year, so this year we didn't find out until August 31st.
Yeah, okay.
And they had actually told us it would be the first week of September, because what's, those, it's appropriated as what's left over.
Right.
And so, we need to know what's extra in, if there's a bond levy equalization portion, that calculation that we use to get bond interest back, that calculation still takes place and those funds go into that fund that helps pay those things back, and then the money that we used to get for lottery goes into that, and the money that we used to get for the maintenance match money, that's why we don't get any maintenance money anymore because all of that goes into those funds, as we need to see what that is left over before they see what they can help us with, so it'll be the end of August again, I think, so. I wish it was earlier.
I know.
Because our L2, we did, our L2 is the document that we submit to the county requesting funding, and I can't submit that until I know how much the state is gonna give us because I can't levy for it and then have the state give it to us also, and that document is always due the first Thursday in September. So, not finding out from the state until August and then having had that document submitted just today, I've got the notice from Donna at that county that the state has approved our L2, and so that is what everybody would be levied if they were to be levied anything, which they won't be, but it's really late in the game for the county to put together the assessment notices and all of those kinds of things because the state just approved those today. And I also received notice from the county today that our levy election has been certified, so it is real and those are the, are real numbers and so, but yeah, we won't find out until very late in the game.
And you're going to a meeting about, the county is doing a meeting on, on, kind of, on that topic, kind of talking to us about...
Yeah, the county is doing a training on Wednesday that I've signed up to, to go to, and it's just really talking about how all of the entities fit together and what each of the needs of the entities are and how the county works in order to make those things happen, so I'll be attending that all day Wednesday at the Bendoe.
Yeah. Which brings us to going on the ISBA convention, I didn't go to that, so I can go to the ISBA. So, yeah. We're leaving at 5:00 AM and it would, should take us, well, it will be 4:00 AM their time, 5:00 AM our time, and we should take six, seven hours to get up there, so hopefully we'll get there by 11:00. So, that should be good.
Just check to get us ready for...
Yes, and then the, the general session starts at noon and then there are two other sessions, and then there's a, I don't know, there's a, I gave, there's a kind of a reception thing, but I made reservations for dinner at 6:15 and Amanda, Amanda and, Amanda and her company, EB Studios will be one of the, one of the sponsors at the, and they'd like to take us to dinner, so I told her, I said, "Well, we've already got reservations, if you want to join us, that would be great," because they said, "We could take you on Wednesday or Thursday," and I said, "Well, Thursday is our awards dinner, but it's up to you guys if you want to attend awards dinner or not," and they go with them, but that's, that's the way it is. And then on Friday, I am meeting with the National Historic Registry and we're gonna go look at the middle school gym and we're going to show them what a great job we've done in taking care of this almost 100-year-old building and how well it's built, and hopefully we can get it on the National Historic Registry. Why do you say that? Well, because by doing that, we can get some grant money, dollars for some things. I've already got a request from one of the PE teachers there, I will name out name, but she said, "Give me some sound-absorbing boards, I want to be able to talk at one end of the gym and have someone at the other end of the gym hear me instead of echoing all over," so that is a real echo chamber.
That's part of the experience, isn't it?
I know, it is, it is, isn't it? Isn't it? Yes, yes, it's, it's, but boy, I'm so proud to show off, I'm so proud to show off that building, that's a pretty cool building, so, yeah. There's lots we could do with it.
Okay, awesome. And we're just gonna meet here, right? Sorry.
Yes, oh, yes, and I will, I'm going to open the gate there at the bus, so we can park around in this area back here, we can put our cars here, so we'll be fenced in, so overnight it'll be in here, or you can have somebody drop you off, that will be fine too, but that way we have, our, our cars are locked in at night.
Secure.
Okay?
Okay.
And then I will give you the code, so when you get back on Friday, you can unlock it and get your cars out, but you could park the van here too, it'll be good to have it parked there, so, everything's good.
Fantastic. Any questions? Comments? Statements? Okay. Anything else? Any citizen comments?
Congratulations to you. Oh, yeah, that's for...
Oh, my goodness, yes. That was on my list to talk to.
Winning.
Congratulations to you.
Since, since we're gonna talk, since you brought it up and talking about it, I, I think it is fantastic and like the public, I would, I need, I wish I would have called Sam, but I appreciate, sincerely appreciate having another name on the ballot. I think it's fantastic that, that some other people are interested and want to run and that our community got to choose between more than just one candidate. I, I think that was awesome and thank him for, for also running and putting his name out there and stepping up too, so it was good. Do we have any communication notes or things that we need to...
Communication.
Citizen comments, I mean, communication and information that sometimes we have letters that are written. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion.
And that we adjourn this meeting.
That's the one.
Somebody's seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's a lot of cake left, if you're so inclined to have a second meeting, it's available.